At 5:30, so I think we'll go ahead and begin. It's a City Commission work session for Tuesday, April 13th, 2021. And we'll begin with a pledge of allegiance. Please join me.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and we have two items on the agenda tonight. And the first, as the sign says, when flooded, turn around, don't drown. So we're going to talk a little bit about the proposed flood hazard warning signs. So Chad, I think you have it from there, right?
I do. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for having me. This item's been on our to-do list for a while. We recognize that it's an important warning sign for our community. Just had a number of other to-do lists in front of it and other things to research. But we've gotten to it where we are proposing, with Rob Ott and Public Works help and the street department's help, to install signs similar to this in various locations in the Wildcat Creek watershed, initially within the city limits. And I'll talk about some ways we can expand it. In your packet, I believe you were provided a map. This is a digital version of it. We can zoom around and fly around. But I think the important piece here is that people, I think, underappreciate how destructive floodwaters can be and how damaging it can be to property as well as life. And so these signs are intended to be placed in areas we know that it floods to keep people, that idea in mind when it's dry out like it is today and then to warn them not to enter floodwaters when there's water there. I did some research, not just to put these signs where we see, we have seen water in the past, but to do a little research and put some data behind it. So these colorful squiggly lines is the floodplain and not just the floodplain, but areas that have, that are, well, it represents the depth as well as the velocity of the floodplain. And so I'll zoom in here. This would be Highland Ridge area. The red area is where it's deeper than three feet and the water is faster than three feet per second, which that three-by-three rule is kind of the research where it shows that an average adult would be at risk of being swept away, knocked off their feet and harmed as well as damage to other properties like a car. The orange color is one or the other. So either three feet deep or moving quicker than three feet per second. And then the yellow is neither of those. But we place signs where we know we've seen water and where it's relatively close to these higher-risk areas. So this would be the Heritage, excuse me, Highland Ridge area. These are approximate locations of these signs. We put them in the public right of way, so not on private property. And Rob and his group have gone out and kind of did a site-by-site inspection. And some of these will change, so these aren't precise locations. But really trying to put them in an area where someone can drive down, see that there's floodwater, see the signs, and be able to turn around or back out without causing issue. So I'll quickly go through these different locations. This is a unique one where we know this area through here floods, but there's a lot of points where someone can enter these neighborhoods. So we've put three of them there, kind of further out. And it may displease some residents there, but all the idea that someone can get down there and then be able to turn around without getting themselves into damage or danger. Anderson Avenue, we routinely seen water there, and that would be deep and quick-moving water. And so we want to, some of it would be under the box culvert that's there, but still fast and deep water, so it could cause issues. And just kind of keep it moving along. I think this is the last location since we know Red Bud gets a lot of water and there's some area there. This would be a prime location there at the linear trailhead. In addition to Rob's group reviewing these, the fire department has always, also looked at it, and they recently sent me a couple more ideas. So this isn't the final version or placement of the signs. They have a few others. They would like to see some additional signs. Another one in this area particularly. So this is really the start of where we'll go. We have the same information and really the same need for signage over in the Blue River watershed. And so we'll take a look at there. The one nice thing about the Blue River is with the flood control from Toe Creek Reservoir, instead of having hours of warning, we have days of warning. So we have a little bit better opportunity to make sure people are aware of the flood danger in the Blue River watershed compared to the Wildcat Creek watershed. But we'll do the same effort here in this part of town as well. So this is an item that has been listed on our Wildcat Creek update for the Resilient Wildcat Creek Plan. And so we're just checking this off. It's a pretty low-hanging fruit, but a good piece, or good project to take on and complete. Like I said, Rob's crew's been out to inspect areas and put final locations. And I believe they'll do the actual making of the signs and installation, probably, what, Rob, four to six weeks, depending on workloads. So we'll get those up here soon. Yes, Commissioner?
I had a cell here. So is like South Manhattan there at the road tracks? Is, we, something like that, will we just put a road closed sign? Or is that really the county's responsibility?
Yeah, that area's out in the county. And I believe they do put road closed signs there at South Manhattan and Temple and those areas. We did not look at that because it's out in the county, although I did share this map with Riley County and they, they're able to, you know, make the same signs and do the same work.
I assume it's just a road closed sign, but people can tell it's like, wow, that's a lot of water.
Yeah, that's a lot. That would be one definite area. But, you know, every time I see flooding on the news, I'm always amazed of how many vehicle rescues people have to attempt because they just drive around road signs and those kind of things. So it's not out of the realm of possibility. And that's the other piece is letting our rescue people know where it's dangerous well. So we shared that with the fire department and emergency folks to know where there's risk there, too.
These are the first, Linda Marsh, these are the first 10 signs. And so I was happy to hear you say that there would be more as you come across the need for them or as they're pointed out to you, and some citizens may contact you, too, to make the point. But it's an important message for us in this low-lying, surrounded-by-river community. And so that was one of the first things that we really did call it low-hanging fruit. It's something we could accomplish easily just by making some signs. And it would be potentially life-saving. So that's why it rose to the top of the list.
Yep.
So I'm glad to see it finally coming.
Yeah, we'll get it done.
On a slow train. Thank you. Yep.
This is Commissioner Ready. So I'm glad we're doing these signs. Is the, are the next few that we do also going to have those on those properties so that people know before purchasing or renting or whatever it might be that it flooded in such-and-such a year or something? So aware of what happened around that area when they make their decisions?
Yeah. Samantha Esterbrook, our resiliency planner and border zoning appeals planners, working on the next set of signs that's also kind of in that easy win list from the actual plan and where they would put more of a historic marker, kind of look and feel, so far less regulatory or warning, but more of a telling the story of the flooding, what properties have been there, why they're no longer there, kind of things. And so she's working on those actively. And so you know also the, another kind of the easy-to-do or high importance, quick-to-do is renters' notification for properties in a flood risk. We're working on those. Actually, put the draft into our new development code already. So really just kind of finalizing some paperwork and that'll be presented to you as we get going through the new development code rollout. So that's another high importance, quick and easy-to-do project that we'll get off the list here soon.
Okay.
Great. Thank you very much.
Support that. I'm looking forward to seeing the historic signs. I think that'll have a big impact to let people know what the history of the flooding is. And then when we get the real estate thing added to it, I think we will have accomplished something. It's taken a while, but thank you. Good work on that.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, we'll move on to the next discussion item, which is proposed amendments for the City of Manhattan for water and sewer utilities. Okay, from there, it's all good.
Thank you, Mayor. Randy Duet, Assistant Director of Public Works for Water and Wastewater. Kind of like Chad's item. This is a, this is a set of items that's been on our to-do list for a while. So we're here mostly to talk about Chapter 32 Utilities Ordinances related to water and wastewater. These are primarily discussion items that we wanted to present to you. There are several items that we're going to need some feedback and input from the commission as we move forward with taking these towards hopefully adoption sometime within 2021. There are some fee items and some rates and charges that are going to be discussed about. So we've got a whole host of amendments we'd like to bring to you, but unfortunately, they're going to take more than one work session. So we divided these into a couple parts. Part one, we're going to talk about tonight are primarily regulatory items. These are items that we are tasked with enforcing on our water and sewer systems by KDHE and EPA. Includes the items that are listed here. These are items that Dr. Abdou Darar oversees as our environmental compliance manager. He and his staff of three environmental compliance officers. And so in a minute, he's going to come up and talk about some of these items. Part two of the updates, which we'll get to at a later date, are really non-regulatory items, more in nature of reorganization of the ordinances, updating some terminology and updating the ordinance to more match what we do in our daily policies and practices, getting rid of unused or obsolete ordinances. The water utility ordinances goes from, you know, the 1970s to now. So there's things that we do now that aren't exactly matching what we did back then. So those are the primary items we'll discuss at a later date. But just want to emphasize that, you know, we're looking for some feedback so we can move forward and working with the city manager's office and the city attorney's office so we can finalize these amendments and bring them back at a later date. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Abdou, and he's going to tell you about all he does for environmental compliance.
Abdou Darar, Environmental Compliance Manager. Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. I'm going to talk to you today about the Environment Compliance Section, which consists of myself and three staff environmental specialists. Our mission statement is to assist the Department of Public Works, Water and Wastewater Division, in ensuring that full compliance with all the environmental regulation by the EBA and KDHE. I work very closely with the superintendent of the water heating plant and his staff to ensure that we meet all the state and federal regulations for Safe Drinking Water Act and water quality standard. For the wastewater heating plant, I work with the superintendent Russell and his staff to ensure full compliance with our MBDS permit. We also run many programs. I'm sure most of you are familiar with. We have the Cross Connection Backflow Prevention Program. We have the Grease Management Permit Program, the Industrial Treatment Program, and the Basel Management Program. And all those programs, basically, we try, the main emphasis is to meet all the environmental regulation set forth by the EBA and KDHE. The first program I want to talk to is the Cross Connection and Backflow Prevention Program. There are some definitions there about basically what cross connection means. It's basically any physical connection between the water supply system and any fixture or appliance which could act as a source of pollution or contamination. Backflow is basically is the unintended reverse flow of water or foreign substances into the public water supply system. Basically, to control the backflow, basically, we install mechanical devices that ensure that, basically installed in water lines to ensure and prevent cross connection and backflow.
Abdou?
Yes.
What really are the chances of my sprinkler system becoming a backflow issue? And somehow, what, does this ever actually happen? Because it just seems like you've got, whoever's got a sprinkler system in various other places, they've got to have these stupid, this has always irked me, because it just seems like this is a one-in-a-million chance that something like this could happen. And I know years ago, a civil engineer told me, it's like, well, the city doesn't have backflow preventers on their water lines. That would make a lot more sense to try to stop the big backflow versus, what exactly would happen in a sprinkler system? Is it going to suck?
Well, you know,
I don't understand the need for it.
Well, let's take the example you just mentioned here, the front yard or the, you know, if you have a lawn, you add chemicals, fertilizer and herbicide and all, and animal release, relieve themselves there. So all that, if you have the sprinkler head, there is a potential there that all those chemicals can be sucked into the public water supply system, to the house, better water lines, and maybe eventually the entire block or citywide. So this is the issue. There's a potential there. I cannot quantify it, but there is a potential.
But what type of a thing could cause a backflow reaction in a water line to even cause something like that?
Well, there is some incident. If somebody, for example, knocked hydrant, that can cause sometimes, you know, back siphoning and can cause this, what, water, contaminant from the, from this lawn can go back to the, through the sprinkler head, can go back to the house plumbing and cause some contamination.
And I suspect this is, this is really an EPA thing, and you guys have to enforce it to keep in the right side with the feds.
We had no choice. I remember I was hired in the city in 1995, and for four years, the KDHE was nagging us and running and fighting this here. And but that, because we were one of the cities that was not, did not have program. And keep, they keep, basically, every time we met with KDHE staff, they put this on the table as requirement. So we have no choice.
Yeah, it just seems like a bunch of unnecessary stuff. Go ahead. It's not your fault.
Yeah, Mark, I want to comment on that because I think the first time I ever came to the City Commission was 1998 to complain about this particular regulation. I think Karen McCullough was down here then, I think, as mayor or something at that point. And it strikes me because I thought it was dumb. But I do recall their justification. Some guy in Texas had taken a fertilizer system and hooked it into his sprinkler system. So he was dropping chemicals directly into it. It was going down through the, through the pipes in the sprinkler system. He didn't have a backflow thing, and it contaminated a good part of the city's water supply. So that's what drove it. You know, you had some rare case where I think you have to be insane to do something like that, me personally. But, but there's people out there that do that, and that's what drove it. And of course, you know, the consequences are if you have a irrigation system, you're going to pay between $75 and $100 a year to get it inspected. And there's not much we can do about it. So that's the conclusion I came to. But that brings back memories of 98, your comments.
And this is what the issue here, we, you know, we basically somehow are hand in thigh. We have to have the program. But our mission here to come talk to you, we want to make this program more fair, more equitable. And that's, we have some ideas here we want to share with you.
So this is Commissioner Ready. I'm sorry, we're harping on your one slide here. But I just wanted to say if, right now, there isn't an enforcement piece to it, I believe is what I read, that we send out letters so people do it. And I think most people are in compliance, is what you said, about 80% are in compliance.
Correct.
But, yeah. If the sprinkler system is done by the owner, do they also get a letter? Or if it's done by a commercial, if you had a commercial agency putting your sprinkler system as opposed to doing it yourself? How do you know when somebody put it, put one in on their own?
Well, this is what, you know, right now, we have a database of about 4,000. So we keep track of this database here. And basically, so, and then when they hire, you know, basically, somebody to do their inspection, this has to be, you know, basically, that person that performed the installation and the testing that's required, he has to be qualified and certified by the state. And he has to send, you know, part of the deal here. He has to test the device, and he has to send us the forms to indicate that the device is working properly.
Oh, I just meant if somebody put in their own sprinkler system. And they, because they know, because I know some people that said they just did it on their own and they don't get a letter because there's not any kind of indication.
Well, and this is what we're probably going to do here. Now we have way, we can check the water usage here. So that's the second stage here. We're going to, we're going to try to find out based on what we use. If somebody, their water usage increased in the summertime, you know, significantly, that's, maybe we need to call and, or send them some letter here and say, do you have irrigation system or not? You know, so we want, we're going to be more, you know, showing more enforcement or more diligent in trying to find those situations as described.
That makes sense. Thank you.
This is the history.
I want to interject. You know, we're focused on irrigation systems, you know, and that was probably the focus of the memo. But we also have to have backflow preventers on all fire sprinkler systems. Any food and beverage convenience store, restaurant, anywhere they have, you know, carbonated soda fountain, they have to have backflow preventers there. So there's other, there's obviously a lot more instances where we have backflow preventers than just lawn irrigation systems. So, and those, those may be more likely to cause some sort of contamination. But I think I'll let Abdou continue. I just want to interject that, so.
Thank you. This is the history that we just discussed here. In 1982, the Kansas Department had a requirement that require all public water supply system, like City of Manhattan, to have a regular program. Again, in 1998, that's when the City Commission approved the ordinance. And been, we had staff and we basically, what, we're coming here tonight, basically, just explain that there are two requirements. First thing, it required the installation of backflow preventer, all fixtures and equipment where backflow might occur and where the contaminated material might enter into the public water supply system. The other requirement that it has to be tested at least once a year. So that's, those are the two pillars of the program that it has. If there is any fixture there or there is potential for contamination, we have to install device. And the device is mechanical, it can get broken, it can become inoperable. And that's why it's important to be tested once a year. This, you know, our compliance here about, if you take exception, last year, 2020, as you know, with the COVID-19 epidemic and so forth here, we saw decline in the compliance rate to about 80%. But generally speaking, with the last 10 years or so, we have about 90% compliance. Now our database, we have 4,000 devices. So there's about 400 or so citizens who are not basically doing, testing their devices as they should once a year. So in order to remedy the situation, about a month ago, on March 12th, we sent letters to about 1,000 citizens who basically, we have their device in the database, but the database indicated they did not test their devices either last year or before. And I'm happy to inform you that we got really positive feedback. Many people basically responded. As a matter of fact, as of today, the percentage of tested devices increased from 80% to 83%. And we're still getting some emails and letters and so forth. So, and most people basically test the device, but they forgot to mail it to us. Or the person who tested the device did not do their job and send the forms to us. One item that we need some of your feedback and basically some guidance and direction. What we're proposing right now, the Cross Connection Program, based on honesty, we send letters to remind the people to do their testing. As a matter of fact, we send three letters to them and try to basically ask them to test their devices. But then we have no enforcement. And that's the issue that the mayor mentioned. If you are a citizen who live in a neighborhood, you know, and you test your device, but your neighbor does not test it, you might, after a few years, decide that's not worth it. Why should I do it? If my neighbor does not do it, then there is no penalty. So this is why I think we want to use the penalty here as an incentive to have the citizen test their devices. And that's basically going to be some deviation from what we have right now. The penalty can be one-time penalty. We propose to be higher than the cost for testing the devices. We did survey for the people who test the devices, and the test, the testing cost ranges between $45 and $150. So if you shop around, you can get a good deal in testing your device. If we make the fine about 200, that, that it makes sense for them to test the device instead of paying the penalty. We're not interested in cashing them, getting the money from them. We just want to ensure we increase our compliance rate. The other options is to have surcharge, monthly surcharge, and then water utility billing until they fix the problem. Or the ultimate solution is to shut off the water here. That's probably the final option that we have. And we may not exercise it. But we need some guidance from you and, you know, but what's the best way to implement those, that enforcement section of this program?
I wanted to comment on that because I've been thinking about this for years. One of the things that's always bothered me is I get three letters, maybe every year, from the Water Department to tell me I need to get this thing inspected. But I don't have control of the inspection because landscape companies do it. And so I call them the beginning of the summer. I think I've been using, I use Growing Concerns for a while, but their guy doesn't do it anymore. So now I'm using Rothwell. But you call them and they say, okay, we'll inspect it. And they either do it in June or July. It takes them a while. And then they batch the inspections and they send them to the city, you know, at the end of the month. And then what happens is, in the meantime, I get two letters telling me I'm non-compliant. And that bothers me about a punishment here because I can't control the system, the process. So if I was running the program, I would basically send everybody one letter at the beginning of the year saying, you have during the growing season between May and August to get your system inspected. And if it's not done by, you know, the end of August, then you send a second letter saying, hey, you failed to do it butler. Okay, so now you violated the ordinance. And then my enforcement would be, I would take out a contract with one of the landscaping companies and have them come and do the inspection, but I'd pay them 125% of the rate and charge it to the customer. And then that way, you get your code enforcement done, and it's not just a fine because I didn't do it. You're also getting it inspected. And that's what we do if somebody doesn't cut their lawn. You know, if it's too big, we send the city guys to do it, and they get billed, what, 50 bucks for mowing the grass? And I think that's a practical way of doing it, and it's not unreasonable.
Well, that's what we're here for, you know. This is one idea here, you know, basically, this has, this idea has to basically clear the legal department first and make sure it's legally okay, but.
But I'd like to see that done. And then, of course, if you can figure out all the systems that haven't been reported, that's a very good point, too. Because, you know, people that put in their own, or I think originally, when this was passed in 98, my system did not have a backflow on it because I bought the house and whoever installed it didn't put it on there. And I checked it and then had to go pay to get one put on to be in compliance. So there may be a lot like that out there. But I think we need a reasonable, methodical system that takes into consideration, you know, the workload of the landscape companies. But this is about a half a million dollar business for them with 4,000 of those out there, and it can go up. So I think it's important to get their input on how fast they can do this. And I don't think it violates the EPA if you said, here's your letter at the beginning of the summer, and then here's your non-compliance letter at the end of the summer, and then send out the plumbers to do the inspections.
Definitely will consider that option. The other program I want to talk about is the Grease Management Permit Program. And this program here, we, you know, And, and this program here, uh, we, uh, you know, basically, uh, I've been working with the Environmental, uh, uh, Agency for years and years, and every time, you know, every time, they have one, one point of emphasis, compliance emphasis. And for the EBA, for the last ten years or so, the sanitary sewer overflow is the main concern. They wanted the city to low, decrease the number of sewer backups. And, and remember, uh, and we had inspection by the EBA in two thousand twelve. At that time, we started our grease management program, and that was basically one point of our favor, that we're trying to do something about the grease issue. Because according to the EBA, forty-seven percent of the sewer backup goes by grease accumulation. So we started the program in two thousand twelve, and, uh, we, you know, this is, was, we didn't have any template, you know, to base it on, so basically, we tried the best here for five years, and we got many, uh, we had many meeting with, with the restaurant owners and, and, and the public and so forth to get some feedback. And two thousand eighteen, we made some changes in the program to make it more efficient. The, one of the things we did before, before the two thousand eighteen, all the permits that she has to be renewed every year, done at the end of the year. So we have big accumulation here, all the restaurants who need to do their testing their devices and the paper law, paper, you know, workload in our staff, which is one person here, was too, almost too much here. So we, we switched the system, instead of changing the permit at one, at the end of the year, we have now like the, what you have with your car license here, you go by alphabetical system, and that seemed to help a great deal. But we run into some problems here, uh, what, and that's why we propose, one of the things we propose to change in the program is, is have some deviation, some special cases. We have some businessmen who have, or businesswoman who have more than one restaurant, and they indicate to us, they would rather do all the renewal for the restaurant at one time instead of having them scattered based in the name of the restaurant. The other, uh, uh, point of, uh, we're proposing or we're suggesting here is, generally speaking, we have very good compliance with the, with the food service establishment. Unfortunately, we have a few exceptions. So basically, we want to have a wash list where we put, where basically the trigger to include in the wash list, which require more, more enforcement and more attention, is if we have an SSO, if we have sanitary sewer of, uh, flow in the restaurant, of course by grease accumulation or in the, in the areas around the restaurant, that's one trigger for adding the restaurant to the wash list. The other, uh, trigger, if our sewer maintenance crew were in their regular maintenance, they found out accumulation of grease in the sewer line, connected the restaurant, that's another trigger to add them to the wash list. And then if we have, if the restaurant issued a notice of violation for two years, the consecutive years. The other, uh, 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 point of consideration for change is right now, if a restaurant issues violation, they have one week to appeal that. And the City Manager Office has only one week to evaluate their appeal. We, that's, uh, we would like to expand that period and return our ordinance from one week to about maybe two or three weeks. Uh, at that point... At this point, I would like to have Randy, you're gonna talk about this segment about the water conservation plan.
Actually, I want to, I want to backtrack a little bit about, I guess, an abatement process for cross connection backflow. That's something that I had, I had proposed to do potentially with internal staff. Um, yeah, we, we quickly kind of went away from that idea just because our staff's already busy enough. Uh, they, each one of our staff members has two to three compliance programs that they can help oversee. But we, we thought about having it, you know, outsourced like we do with, with weeds or with, uh, erosion control. The issue that I, that I see with that is, is unlike, you know, being able to go put out erosion control shield fence or being able to go out and mow a lawn, these devices aren't always accessible. Uh, it could be inside a building, you gotta locate them, and so that's, that's the hurdle I think we're gonna run into if we try to use an abatement program. There's also the idea that if we're gonna pay Rothwell or somebody to do it upfront, uh, and then we're gonna turn around and build a customer, I don't, it's hard for us to, to recoup those funds, so we could be, go from a, a program where we don't make any money to the program where we lose money. And, and so those are some of the things that we thought about when we talked about a potential abatement program. So it's easier for us to, to either assess them a fine, they still may not pay that, it goes to municipal court, or, like I said, water shut-off is, is probably my preferred method, uh, because it gets straight to the point. And there's other stipulations there that they have to meet in order to get that turned back on.
Yeah, I would just prefer that we don't go that fine route, si- simply, simply because I, I understand you, you could, you could bill it to the water bill, and if they didn't pay, well, then, then you might lose something, but, but, you know, tying them up in court and irritating half the population because there's some things that can go wrong on this, I, I just don't think that's the right way to go. And I think we can, just like we have, you know, on-call people to do things, that you could contract with one of these companies. And again, you know, if, if the cost is seventy-five dollars to do it, if we end up doing it, you know, we, we end up, you know, charging the customer a hundred and twenty-five dollars.
And, and we've been down that route, trying to look at assessing grease management fees on water utility bills. Right now, it's not an option for us. So that, that would be the most feasible option, you know, in, in the future, if we get our up, an updated billing system. I'm all for that. It makes things much more cleaner. But right now, we don't have that option, so just as an example.
We probably need to explore that, make, make the process more efficient.
Yep.
And less, less of a hassle for people.
So moving on, I guess, to water conservation. So we have to have a water conservation plan in place by ordinance as well as a, an actual written plan that's adopted by the commission, because we are a member of the Kansas River Water Assurance District. So it's another, another item that's required by the state because we are a member of that organization. And just, if you're not familiar with that, that organization is a group of municipalities like us, and I believe Evergy is a part of it as well, where we draw on water from the Kansas River Basin for our domestic water. And so it's a consortium of these cities that, um, as a group, we own pools of water in the reservoirs within the Kansas and Republican River Basin where we can draw on in the, in a time of drought. And ensure that there's adequate flow in the Kansas River, uh, in the Blue River in our instance, to make sure that we have adequate water to meet our needs during a, during a drought. So the water conservation plan is, you know, primarily a tool to respond to drought conditions or short-term drought so that we can, uh, ensure that there's water conservation, um, and, and water for our basic necessities. Primary objectives are listed there. Again, it really, really makes, make sure that we have adequate, adequate volumes of high-quality water for our citizens, for the businesses, industries, in a time of short supply, short supply during a drought. And it also ensures the availability of water storage in Tuttle Creek Reservoir, again, for the aforementioned use of our, uh, peers downstream. Uh, secondary objectives of the water conservation plan, um, they're listed there, I'm not gonna get into details, but, uh, except primarily, it's a drought response. Some of the things we're looking at updating is, uh, there's some discrepancies between our current adopted plan, which was adopted in two thousand thirteen, and the current ordinance. Uh, several years ago, we adopted some ordinance for, uh, more immediate disaster response, i.e., a couple of years ago when we had the flood, and we looked at, uh, potentially having to shut off half of our raw water supply well field because we wanted to isolate it, because those wells are on the wet side of the levee. Uh, so in an immediate water crisis, uh, one of the things that the ordinance allows us to do is to have the city manager declare that, and we can implement some of the same provisions as we would if it was a drought. And so right now, that is an ordinance, but it's not in our water conservation plan, so we have to update the plan. Again, this will be brought to you at a later date, um, for official adoption. Uh, other things that we're gonna update in the ordinance have to do with how we communicate information. Of course, the existing ordinance, uh, goes through our official newspaper, um, but we, times are changing, so obviously we need to update that so that we're using more of our media accounts, um, website, uh, systems like Everbridge through the county and Northeast Region System. So those are the things that we're gonna be bringing to you and talking about, maybe at a later date. That's it on water conservation, so I'm gonna turn it back over to Do.
Back to the regulatory, uh, uh, programs we have, that we, um, wanna make some changes here. One of them is the chapter thirty-two utility, Article Three Sewers. Uh, we, uh, in the Environmental Compliance Section, we get tons of requests from people that they want to discharge chemicals into our sewer system. And we have a forum here, they have to fill out, and basically they are prohibited substances from this, kind of discharge sewer system. We get tons of calls, people say, "Antifreeze, an old one, and they want to, can, can they, can we dump it in the sewer system?" So we have to respond to them, explain to them why, why cannot do that. Uh, and, uh, most, most recently here, we have a request from, from a local, uh, medical laboratory, ask if they can dispose some, some of the, some of the medical waste to our, to our sanitary collection system. And that's basically what, we don't want to do that, but we do not have specific language in our ordinance right now that lists that as a prohibited substance. So we'd like to propose adding medical waste as one of the prohibited substances. Uh, the other thing that we get inquiries about swimming pools. Uh, people, then in the summer, want to get rid of their swimming pool here, and so, and they ask if they, what's the, what's the requirement for the shark getting rid of the candidum but in the sewer system? Uh, and basically, uh, we don't have anything right now specific dealing with swimming pool discharges, so we want to add that to our ordinance. Another issue here, uh, we have, luckily, we have grease management program that deals with the grease issues for, for food service establishment. But we have many other establishments, namely automotive industries and car washes where they're supposed to have, uh, basically, uh, grease, oil, and sand trap, but it's not working properly, and we see it, we have issues with the accumulation of too excessive sand or, uh, automotive oil in the sewer system. So basically, we did not want to have a new program just dealing with this here. We just would like to have some, uh, some okay from you or approval here for adding something in our sewer ordinance that says basically, if you're not operating your, your, uh, your, uh, sand trap and oil and, uh, properly, and we, we have evidence that there is, there is, uh, oil and sand in the collection system, that we'll be, we'll be issuing notice of violation.
Do, one more question on that there. So on the swimming pool thing, I'm sure everybody's pool generally is, is set up to drain through their, uh, sanitary sewer system. Is, is it the chlorine, is that the concern there?
The chlorine, yeah. The chlorine is a concern. So basically, if they have, if they have basically permanent connection to the sewer system, that's, that's fine, but we just basically, they have to bring the chlorine level down.
Before they, before they drain it.
Before they can release it, yes.
You're not asking people to run a hose out to the, to the gut, curb and gutter and drain it into the stormwater system or anything?
No, it's not. It's not acceptable.
Just, just don't put any chlorine in for a while, wait ten days, two weeks, whatever, so it, till it's dissipated and then...
And that's what we want to, we want to have right now, language, specific language that gives all the details about what do you need? You need to bring the chlorine down, you need to make sure the flow rate is, uh, proper, you don't want to exceed the, the, you know, basically what's, uh, can be done with the sewer, uh, pipes we have. So basically, we're gonna just, uh, write in the ordinance all the stipulation and so to be clear, and then we, when we respond to requests, we have the, the language, the ordinance to support our response to them.
So, so does the chlorine kill off the little boogers in the, in the sewer system? Is that a concern?
That's, that's the concern. If it's more than, if it's more than four milligrams per liter, it's too much, and this is why they need to bring it down to less than four milligrams per liter. So we're just gonna, uh, basically specifically mention, and then the pH basically of the, uh, of the water has, has to be right now in our ordinance between five and a half and eleven. So as long as it is within that range, it's, it's okay to dump it in the sewer system. But if it's higher than eleven or less than five, then it can be, that can be corrosive and can cause some damage. The other, uh, uh, Article Five, the Breach Treatment Program, uh, we currently have seven, uh, seven, uh, significant industrial users, uh, they're listed there in the slide, and basically, uh, we have not had any changes in this here since the, we have the program started in two thousand eight, except in two thousand eighteen, we, we included local limits for some heavy metals, arsenic, molybdenum, copper, and zinc and so forth. So basically, uh, uh, one requirement, we had inspection by the EBA of our program in November. Luckily, we came, uh, came out fine, that, but they made a recommendation that they have specific, specific language right now, it's called the, the streamlining language. They want to make sure we have that language, and in a nutshell, that language allowed the, those SAU, right now, we have to issue permit and they have local limit, they cannot exceed. What the streamlining will allow them to use best management practices to ensure compliance. So basically, it will lessen the regulatory burden in those industries, in those SAUs, and at the same time, ensure the protection of our environment. The other item here, uh, we have, is we have few SAU that discharge high-strength waste. This is somewhat technical, but I would do my best to explain this U. The, the high-strength waste, there is two parameter in the waste, either the BOD, the biochemical oxygen demand, or that the total suspended salts. If there are more than three hundred milligrams per liter of, uh, BOD, then that's classified the waste as high-strength. If the total suspended salts more than three hundred and fifty, then that qualifies as waste as high-strength. Uh, the high-strength waste, uh, require more treatment at our plant. It's kind of hard to see this here, but this is just, uh, uh, shows the, this is a textbook in, in, in engineering and lists basically what you expect as far as the BOD and TSS from, and with, if the waste stream is weak or medium or high-strength. So basically, we have two, uh, SAU investigated, FETMID and BRI, and they, the way they get rid of the carcass of animals after they finish with the research is basically put them in a big pressure cooker and add potassium hydroxide and basically cook, uh, uh, cook them under pressure and then release that waste into our system. Uh, generally speaking here, if we look at the BOD, the, this is the measure of the strength of the waste, the organic strength. If it's, uh, weak, it's about one hundred and ten, if it's medium, two twenty, if it's high, four hundred. Our average for our plant for the last twenty-two years is about one ninety. So we're, we're somewhere between weak and medium. And if you look at the FETMID, the charges here, the BOD for those is order of magnitude higher than the normal residential waste. It's one hundred and eighty-nine thousand, uh, uh, you know, so it's very, uh, I'm sorry, one hundred and twenty-two thousand, five thirty-six. The waste from BRI, sixty-eight thousand, five hundred and seventy-seven. Our permit limit that, you know, we have to meet, otherwise we'll be non-compliant, is thirty milligrams per liter of BOD. So if you have our waste here, one hundred and ninety, it's easier to bring it to that limit or lower than if you have one hundred and twenty-two thousand, uh, six, five hundred and six, and sixty-eight thousand, five hundred and seventy-seven. So for the sake of equity and fairness here, should we charge, we already charged them high-strength, uh, more surcharge for this, but are, should we get, try to get our, uh, money back? Basically, can we have full recovery of the cost for treating this high waste? And that's basically one of the questions, uh, uh. So basically, to try to figure out, how can we quantify? How can we find out how much it costs to treat one pound of... How can we find out how much it costs to treat one pound of BOD? We took our BOD and TSS numbers, and we figured out how many pounds we had per year using the year two thousand, and this is the budget for this, for the wastewater treatment plant. Not the administration, just the treatments, part of the, of the budget, and we came up with about a dollar each per pound, it costs to treat the waste. Right now, for, for, for many, since two thousand twelve, we've been charging them only fifty, fifty cents per pa, per pound, and thirty-eight, you know? But this year, we have six percent increase, so the number increased to fifty-eight cent, fifty cent, fifty-eight cents per pound for BOD and forty cents. To get the full, the cost for recovery here, it's a dollar here. So, basically, we're here, we're, what we're showing you here, basically, for FatMed, they had twenty-one discharges in the year usually, and BRI have eight, and we collected only twelve thousand from them, and for, about five thousand for BRI. That's with our current rate. If we increase our rate to about seventy-five percent recovery, then we will collect more money from them, but not, you know, it's only sixteen thousand or about six thousand for BRI. If we go for full recovery, and that's the cost of our cost for treatment, which is one dollar each for BOD and TSS, we will collect this much money, twenty-two thousand eight, or eight, about eight thousand, six hundred and forty from BRI. So, given the importance of state and how important for the vitality of the community here, we just would like to have some guidance and direction from you. Should we stay the way we are right now, our current rate, fifty-eight cents and forty, or try, try, try to aim at seventy-five percent recovery or full recovery?
This is, sorry.
Give you my thoughts on that quickly, 'cause this is another one I've thought about at great length. You know, the Water Department's Enterprise Fund, it's supposed to be run like a business, so the answer should be obvious, a business is not gonna give away its services, so we should charge a hundred percent recovery.
This is Commissioner Ready. I just need a, a few clarification points.
Okay, sure.
So, how much, so I, I understand, right now, it's one ninety is where, is it BRI or I had, or their average is at one ninety, and we said three hundred or four hundred is the high?
Uh, no, if we, if we go back, let me, how can I go back here? Yeah, okay.
Right there, yeah.
Okay. That's the, this is here, the, this one here is our plant. The average influence, the BOD in our plants is about one ninety.
Right.
But, but FatMed is one hundred and twenty-two thousand, five thirty-six, order of magnitude higher than, than our normal residential waste.
Okay, that, that's what I was misunderstanding.
Yeah, that's for BOD. That's not just, if you look at other parameter, TSS, total nitrogen, total phosphorus, everything is, is very high strength, it's very condensed, it's very, and it, it takes more money, more effort, more time to, to treat it.
Right.
Luckily for us, they don't do it every day. If you do do it every day in the year, we may, we might have to buy, get another plant. They do it just basically, average twenty-one, twenty times for FatMed and about eight times for BRI.
Okay. So, it looks like we just increased it, did you say, last year or this year?
No, we increased it six percent this year.
Okay. So, why didn't we increase it more? Why, why are we just now looking at that? Because, but I don't want it to be, it's, it's so, it seems like such a drastic step to go from fifty-eight cents to either seven, seventy-six, or even a dollar or ninety-nine cents, whatever it might be. It looks, it looks so drastic from just the few cents that were increased in those few years. Why didn't we just do that when we increased it? Why didn't we just go for cost recovery or even fifty percent more as opposed to just six percent?
Well, like Abdu said, this is, last year was the first year we raised those rates in, in a number of years, and, and I presented that when we presented our utility rate increases as, you know, the intention moving forward is that every year, if we increase rates by one percent, two percent, zero, just the normal everyday monthly usage, that from now on, we'll, we'll adjust these rates as well. At that time, we basically said, you know, we have these other analysis that we're gonna present to you at a later date, and this is it. We, we agree that, that the impacts to, to them might be large, but for us, I mean, you know, a hundred percent cost recovery does not bring a, a significant amount of revenue to us. So, it's, it's a philosophical question of, do you wanna, do you wanna allow the rest of the, the system to continue to subsidize these, these customers, or do we want to have them pay a fair and equitable rate? Which, you know, if you go back several years, the intent of our most recent rate structure change was the cost to serve basis, and trying to get almost all customers as, as close as possible as paying fair and equitable rates, no matter who you are, if you use, you know, five units of water a month, or if you use ten thousand units of water a month. So, that's really the driver behind this. And also, you know, we don't have an issue if we wanna look at phasing this in, but we, what we wanna do is be able to let these entities know with plenty of time, I mean, we know what the status of budgets are with the state and the universities, so anytime we wanna do something like this, we wanna give them as much notice as possible. So, again, it's, it's, we knew that there would have to be some customer impact analysis done for this, so we gave you a couple options. I, I personally, you know, I, I agree that we should go with the cost to serve philosophy and make sure they're paying the same rate as everybody else in terms of, you know, trying to break it down into the, what does it cost us to treat one pound of BOD, TSS, et cetera? So, really, the direction we need is, when do you wanna do it? Should we phase it in?
Right.
Are you okay with seventy-five percent, a hundred percent, status quo? So.
Right. So, I, my other question is, NBAF is coming in, NBAF is here, so what role do they play in this?
Well, luckily for us, NBAF have, they're gonna have their own break treatment system, so their waste gonna be almost residential, because they're gonna have regular treatment plant, and they're gonna have artificial wetland to, to even clean further. So, basically, based on the information we have from them, it's gonna be almost residential waste.
Okay, because I think that's the conversation I'm hearing in the community. This one we can manage because it goes into our own systems and we have some processes in place. There's this bigger conversation about NBAF and what's happening to their waste products and such, but you're saying we don't have control over that, is what I'm hearing you say.
No, we're, we're in close contact with them. As a matter of fact, they invite us, invite us, invite me and the superintendent for the waste treatment plant, and they have their consultant who basically doing training for their staff, and we sat with them, and we went through the whole treatment system, and we saw all the component, and if, you know, based on the engineering reports and based on information, because, because we have to issue a permit, and in order to issue permit, they have to provide you with information. And right now, to the best of our knowledge here, there is, the waste, the waste treatment waste is gonna be almost residential, less than three hundred and fifty, three hundred per BOD, and less than three fifty per TSS.
Okay, so you're in constant communication with them about what's happening in that realm. I think for this one, I would like, I don't necessarily wanna consider a phase-in program, but I do think they need to be informed ahead of time because this is gonna take a hit on their budget as well, just like when we did water increases for the school district and such, just to see what that looks like.
Well, the, the intent for most of these, most of these items we're presenting to you is to, to have the rest of the year to work on these and finalize these. You know, my, my goal would be twenty twenty-two implementation, except for, for any one of these particular items, we can, we can push it back, we can do whatever. That's, that's what we're here for, is to get feedback and direction.
Okay, thank you.
I had a thought here. I, yeah, we need to get to a hundred percent, but yeah, if you wanna do seventy-five percent in twenty twenty-two and a hundred percent in twenty twenty-three, and at that point, it may be a buck five or a dollar nine in a couple more years based on your figuring here, 'cause nothing stays the same or gets cheaper hardly, so, yeah, so it's even, yeah, the, you're probably, your price for cost recovery at a hundred percent will probably be more than a dollar in a couple of years, but I would be fine. We've gotta get it there, 'cause, well, yeah, the vet hospital part is, is still a not-for-profit, I suspect. It, they generate some income with their, with their, yeah, facilities and stuff, so they, I don't think this, this community as a whole needs to subsidize some of that, but, so I'd be fine, seventy-five next year, a hundred the year after, and then just stay on top of it, but if everybody else wants to do it a little faster, a little slower, but we need to get there soon.
And Linda Morse, these are not necessarily high costs. If the total is, the annual increase for one hundred percent is, for FatMed is twenty-two thousand, and BRI is eighty-six hundred. I don't mind the seventy-five percent first year, as lo, and they know that we're going to a hundred percent, but I want us to be recovering the costs. I don't wanna be giving away the city's services at a time when we, you know, we may have had in the past some, giving away some water, or, you know, I want us to, this, this is something we have to recover, and if we have to do it seventy-five percent for maybe January and then, but the next year, it needs to be one hundred. I'm willing to go to one hundred percent just next January, but with some notice, because these are not hundred thousand dollar amounts. These are, I believe, a more, much more reasonable amount, and I think any responsible organization needs to recover its costs.
So, so those amounts there are based on what those average annual number of discharges? So, those, those numbers for a hundred percent cost recovery or seventy, seventy-five percent cost recovery don't reflect their increases, it, it reflects what their annual charge would be.
Right.
If they discharged the average amount that they have in the past. The, the assumption we have that, that may impact this is that in the future, you know, more synergy comes through NBAF, that they may be doing substantially more research.
Uh-huh.
So, the, the quantity or volumes that they'll discharge increase, which at that point, we wanna make sure not only are we capturing that revenue, but also that it's not impacting, you know, the capacity of our plant.
Absolutely. We don't want to increase the amount that we're not collecting for, so, yeah, we have to look ahead.
As a matter of fact, we have, now, right now, currently, we have an agreement with them that they cannot discharge the same day. So, basically, when they call us ahead of time, they have to call the other laboratory to ensure they're not, we're not doing two discharge the same day, because we don't wanna handle all that at once. So, our compliance and with them is more important. The worst thing for us is to, for a few thousand dollars, we have order, you know, basically fine from the EBA and all the consequences of that. So, basically, the aim is to stay in compliance, and, and again, you know, we, but at the same time, this is philosophical question, is the, you know, and, and do we wanna get, you know, I guess we, 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 we will come back to you when we have the sewer rate, and we're gonna propose something, either seventy-five or one percent based on the discussion we have now.
I don't like those little fine print ads in the newspaper that says we're being cited with something, so I'd like for you to take care of that, so that we're always in compliance.
Okay.
One last question.
Go ahead.
So, are you guys able to sort of sequester that stuff when it gets to the plant and treat it separately, or do you just have to treat sort of everything that comes in that day with the full process?
Well, you know, everything, we, we receive five, average five million gallons a day, and it has to be treated, you know? I mean, we, we have sometimes during, when we have rain and so forth, we have excessive here, and we have to store some of the waste, because it's increased the hydro, beyond or higher than the hydro capacity of the plant, but mostly, we treat as it comes, basically, and we, and then we discharge back to the river here, clean water here. So, this is, this is the, and this is basically whether, you know, the other issue we have is with liquid waste haulers, because we have two, two entity that basically bring liquid waste to our plant here, basically, and we're gonna talk about this in the next slide here, but, but we usually treat as, as it comes.
I, I would add in there that the, the way that our, our NPDS permit is set up, you know, we can have days where we're out of parameters, it's just a matter of our overall snapshot. Abdu knows much more about our parameters, and we're, we're, our permits are based off of the, the amount of pounds that we're allowed to discharge into the, the river per year.
That number, the thirty, yeah. That number is the average, average monthly, so we can have one number high, but as long as the average thirty or less, we're fine. The weekly average should be forty-five or less, so we can have some numbers high, but you get one number high or the magnitude, that can screw your, your average, and then you've been uncompliant. So, I believe me, I, I, that's why I spend all my time here, every month, sending the report to the state, and, and, and I check and recheck and make sure everything is okay, because we, there's no room for error here.
Thank you.
I have a question. The, so this, we're only talking about a surcharge when it's high strength, so it doesn't impact anything unless it hits the high strength level? And that high strength is four hundred?
High strength, according to our regulation, three hundred for BOD and three fifty for TSS. And, and...
Okay.
And, but... There's, there's a specific formula in the ordinance that, that helps us to, to determine their, their rates, and that goes back to what Abdu showed about that Met Cafinetti's textbook page, which is kind of the standard for wastewater engineering and treatment.
Well, my question is, is, are those, I mean, how, how many people are we talking about, or is it only these two?
That we have just two, and we have two entity, the FatMed and BRI, that right now, we have another outfit, it's in, it's in BVRC in, in Pot County, that basically discharges some high, and we use the same formula, the formula is the same. You know, the, the part of the formula is how much it charges per pound. So, if we increase here, we're not gonna just single out, single out state, gonna be every other, basically, person that discharges waste. If they have high BOD, they're gonna be charged the same rate, pound, dollar per pound. As a matter of fact, you know, before, a few years ago, we've been generating more money from the Tallahassee Brewery, but they went out of business. They were producing also high strength waste, but they went out of business, and so right now, the main two players we have is state, FatMed, and BRI.
And they're, they're also paying normal monthly rates on every unit of wastewater that they discharge on top of it, so.
Okay, so that's discussion about high strength. Then we go back to the normal fee for, since the program started in two thousand eight, we charged the SIUs, we charged them one, one rate, which is for issuing them permit, industrial wastewater discharge permit. The cost is three fifty, we did not increase it until this year, and we have six percent increase, you know, so increase from, increase from three fifty to three seventy-one. We did some survey with, to some of the neighboring cities and, and other cities in the Midwest here, and realized that we, there are some, some cities that charge more money for the same permits. So, basically, as a goal here, we have a target of increasing this rate to five hundreds per year, because our cost of shipping, because we have to inspect those plants, we have to collect samples, and we have to send them to the laboratory, and the commercial laboratory that we send, they'll increase the rates. So, the question here, we have not adjusted to inflation, we have not adjusted for the increases in shipping costs and laboratory analysis costs, should we recover our cost and raise the fee to five hundred? And if we, if we agree with that, how soon should we do it? Should we do it incrementally or at once? And finally, we have two, we have two contractors that we issued permit to bring liquid waste to our plant, and that's mostly septic tank waste and chemical toilet waste. And for those here, the rate was fifty dollars for the permit, has not changed for a long time, was changed by six, six percent this year to fifty-three. Again, we did some survey, and we realized that, that most, some other, some other city charged about sixty dollars. So, we wanna increase that to sixty dollars, either incrementally or at once. Besides that, when they bring the truck to the plant, they be, they may fee forty dollars before, for every one thousand gallons. We increased six percent this year to forty-two. Again, we would like to change this rate to fifty to recover our cost and account for inflation. So, this is our, this minor changes, but we just would like to have some direction about if you agree with it, that we should increase, recover our cost, and if so, should we do it incrementally or at once? And that's the end of our conversation. I'll open the floor here for question or comments.
This is Commissioner Ready. So, I don't, I'll just try to not be very confusing. First of all, I really do appreciate all the work you do. First of all, I really do appreciate all the work you do to keep our water system safe for our community. I don't think people really recognize, um, the maintenance and the structure and the, um, staff and the timing and, and down to the last digit that you have there, how all of that matters. So, uh, we are grateful to have you working for the city of Manhattan and we hope you stay here for decades to come. But with that said, I think for chapter thirty-two, for the liquid waste hauling fees, I'm comfortable, uh, increasing it like you proposed, um, at the sixty dollars and fifty dollars, I believe is what you were saying. I'm also comfortable with the, uh, article three for liquid waste haul. This is the same, so I don't mind switching it up just a few dollars. I think for the fifty dollar a year for recovery is the one I'm having a little bit of a problem with. It seems pretty dramatic going from three seventy-one to five hundred. So it can be incremental, but I, I think it should be at least maybe four hundred first or something like that and move it on up to five hundred. Uh, that's a huge change. I think those, um, that needs a little bit more, uh, information for the people that are going to feel that impact on their own budgets, because that's a, that's a pretty dramatic change. And same for the, um, BRI and Vetmed. Give them a heads up, but I think, uh, most of the commissioners were saying, increase it to seventy-five the first year, next year, and the year after that going to a hundred. I'm comfortable with that as well. Giving more time for, um, what is it? Uh, the grease management piece? Yeah, I think you said two or three weeks. Which one is it, two weeks or three weeks?
Well, that's to be decided, you know. Last time we had discussion with city manager, we, originally we said one month, but he thought the month is too, too much, uh, three weeks.
Weeks, yeah. Because if you don't count the weekends and you just have business days, you want to give enough time that you're doing it appropriately, also on the other end for the ones that are receiving or com- filing the complaint. For the back, uh, backflow water, let me see, what was the discussion there to? What did you want us to do there to increase it? I don't remember now.
Yeah, we're looking for more enforcement measures.
More enforcement.
Oh, yeah, the enforcement mechanism. I, I am not for shutting off anybody's water. I, I like to keep that off the table. For me, that's not very comfortable. Instead of increasing it to, you know, over the hundred fifty, increasing it to two hundred, um, I've been fined for a variety of things, usually just a small amount, forty-five, fifty dollars. Uh, then you can keep that while they pay, um, the actual fee that it is to maintain it. But I don't think it needs to be above and beyond what would be a traditional cost of fifty or seventy dollars or whatever it might be, mainly because you want to get their attention to comply. We don't want to punish them because we really don't know the circumstances. And this way, at least there's a little bit of a burn. Now, if they, if they refuse two or three times, I can see you increasing that penalty by twenty-five dollar increments or something like that. But I don't want to see people in court and I certainly don't want their water shut off. Uh, our, our job here is to make sure they comply with the backflow for prevention for the safety of the community. And if there are circumstances for which they can't do that, I think we need to call and understand what it is and try to work something out with them.
I mean, the, the, I guess there's, you got to focus on the different types of customers there are that are utilizing those. Uh, restaurants, businesses, you know, it's, to me, not being a business owner, I couldn't say what that impact would be for them. For an irrigation system, you know, I can, I can attest that it's not cheap to have an irrigation system going all throughout the summer. So I would say if they can afford to keep their grass green, they can afford to get their backflow preventer tested. If, if they're not using that system, they can remove it and they can take that system out of service and they can notify us. And that's one of the things we want to do. We want to know, you know, what's an active system and what's not. So if, if they don't want to pay to have that system in operation, they don't want to pay to have the backflow device tested, that's an option too. I mean, we just need to know so it's not in our system. But we will, you know, we'll keep it in our system because somebody's going to move in. They sell a home, they're going to start that system back up. So we need to know. But, but at least then we know that maybe we're not going to be assessing them, um, a fine every year or something, whatever it is, because they don't have the system in operation. So that's, I guess, my, my train of thought on, on, on those issues.
Well, do we know why there, some of them are not doing it? I mean, do we, is it just stubbornness or what are the reasons, uh, why they not be complying? I, I would think if you're getting eighty percent compliance and then another few percentage points after that, um.
I mean, that, I think that's part of the process we're going to go through in, in looking at a customer's winter quarter average and then going back and look at their winter, their winter uses versus their summer usage. And we're going to cross-reference those databases and find out who's using their irrigation and who isn't registering their devices or paying to inspect it. It should be a relatively simple thing to do with it, with the data that we have. This is, we really haven't had access to this, this level of data this easily as we do now with some of our new systems. So over the course of the next several months, we'll, we'll start working with, um, customer service and starting to get in that data. I think we can, we can rule out those, those people that are, you know, either they don't know about it or they're willingly, you know, avoiding having inspected because they don't want to and they don't want to pay for it.
Yeah, I just want us to be cautious about residential ones that don't pay, because it doesn't seem to be that many. Like I said, there have been years when I did not do it, but a decade or two ago, when I had to skip a year mainly because I couldn't afford the hundred dollars that we're charging. And then I totally forgot about it. Uh, but I did receive the messages and everything. But I think there are people that are probably stubborn and say this is worthless, I don't ever want to do it. And there are some that may feel like, well, I forgot or I meant to do it, but nothing happened or something like that.
Kind of like what we're looking at doing for the, the watch list on the grease management. Somebody who's a habitual offender.
Yeah.
Maybe there's a happy medium where we can keep an eye on them. If they don't do it for two or three years in a row, then, then it's time to start looking at enforcement actions.
I agree, I agree with that. I, I think that's more reasonable, uh, to look at closer. So those are, those are my comments unless I missed something else in there.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'll weigh in a little bit on, on the liquid waste hauling fees. Yeah, jack that up to sixty bucks next year for the permit, because that's insignificant. And Mr. Incremental here, I'd say, yeah, jump up to, on the disposal be fifty next year and sixty in twenty-twenty-three and, um, because that's, they'll, they'll just pass on those extra costs to their customers and, um, and that's not going to be a big issue, I don't think. Well, it'll be, yeah, don't like it necessarily, but if we're not recovering our costs on that kind of stuff, then we need to get a lot closer. So, um, there's always the challenge on, with like the big commercial SIUs or, or something. Ki- Kansas sometimes has the reputation apparently of being an expensive place to kind of do business on some things. And so we don't want to, there's a balance between, you know, getting some cost recovery and sort of telling businesses figuring out, it's like, wow, the, the water, sewer and everything is too expensive in Manhattan. We don't want to, to go there. So there, I realize there's a balance, but some of that stuff is based on the fact that, yeah, water and stormwater and stuff, hey, if the place floods, um, we've got to do something to prevent that. And if it, it causes the rates of some of these things to be higher, um, we'll just have to try to figure out, uh, yeah, there's, that may not be attractive to every business, but hopefully the ones that don't use a lot of utilities will still want to relocate here and grow themselves here. But, um, yeah, we need to start cranking those up. And like I say, just over a period of a couple of years, get them up to where they need to be. And, uh, and then just hopefully we can stay on top of it with, with small increases starting in twenty-four, twenty-twenty-four and, and just stay on top of it that way. So there's not a big spike again. But, um, I think, yeah, over the next couple of years, let's get most of these things implemented.
Um, Linda Morris, I would just say that we have to ensure, um, regulatory compliance with EPA. And, uh, and so these are the considerations that we have, measures we have to take to assure that. Um, and because we have not updated some of our regulations and fees for, since two thousand eight or two thousand twelve, whatever, it, it's, we have to deal with it. And this seems like the time, because you've brought it, you know, you've done all the collection of data and you're bringing it to our attention. And I think it's important that we cooperate. I would, with regard to the proposals that you have, um, you know, because we have, we know that there are customers who are not testing, I think an estimate of four hundred possibly. And because we know that, uh, this is, uh, I think I saw another number here, forty-seven percent of backups are grease related. So I, I do support adding enforcement and the, um, for non-compliance to give an incentive for customers to test their devices. And, uh, I support, I don't know, I, I can support either the abatement to, uh, propose to outsource, uh, or, um, you know, as a last resort, shutting off their water. And I don't want to do that lightly, but I also think that, uh, given the, there are some really stubborn people who take it as far as we will let them. And, and those are the people that we might have to actually, you know, take that kind of remedial action. Uh, yes, I would support granting more flexibility. You're seeking to include a clause granting more flexibility, uh, in renewal months uh, for this alphabetic schedule. Uh, I support a watch list. There are, you know, uh, you, you gradually know who the, the, those that are not cooperative. And so they're the ones you need to watch and I support that. I support, uh, the notices of violation from, uh, one week to cha- change it to two to three weeks, whatever works out, whatever you can turn around and make sure it happens. Let's see. There are more of these. I have them marked. The proposed additions, uh, for medical waste in certain swimming pools. I, you, you know, you're absolutely right. And I'm not adverse, I, I agree with your solution, um, to fill those gaps of prohibited discharges. I would support, um, new enforcement provisions, uh, for car washes and grease, sand and oil separator, but whatever it takes, because how else can we ever achieve, uh, uh, the standards that we have to enforce? I don't even know how to regard heavy metals, so, so it's, uh, uh, something that you're specialized, you specialize in. Yes, I would support reducing the regulatory burden without affecting the, uh, the protection of the environment. So, um, and I, I don't like raising rates, but I do support the, the need to recover our costs. We can't afford, we may be able to do that for two dollar swim nights at the pool. That's short-term, that's temporary, that's a service to the community. This is something that's day after day, week, week, month, month, around the year. And these are a cost of doing business for, uh, these, uh, folks. So I support recovery, um, industrial pre-treatment. If we need, set a target and, and so the five hundred dollars is where we, because we have not, uh, incrementally, and you know, I, I don't want you to go ten, fifteen years before you come back to us. If we're setting a rate, I don't know, every two or three years or two years, you, you've got, you know, no business does that. They don't lose money, they have to raise rates. I, I pay that at the grocery store every year, twice a year, things have gone up. So I don't expect you to do that either. And I expect us to seek that. Let's see what this one is. Oh, the liquid waste permit fee of fifty dollars hasn't been changed and you're recommending fifty-three? Well, that was the six percent increase, so.
Recommended sixty.
Sixty now, now, our target.
Pardon?
Sixty our target now.
Yes, I would support that. And, and I think, yeah, sixty dollars and fifty per thousand gallons. So there you go. I, I really support the things that you have brought to our attention that I, I don't see any of them as being excessive. I think they are a cost of doing business and, and we're a business too. And with regard to this, uh, we serve businesses and, uh, not, and I don't know, I don't under, I don't know about irrigation systems, but I know that there are certain rules you have to follow. And our residents have to follow them, our commercial entities have to follow them. So, um, there's no get out of jail free card on some of these, uh, costs. If you want a green lawn, you got to pay for it.
I think, uh, you've heard enough of, as far as incrementally, uh, increasing. So go for that, um, of course. But I did want to say that I think, uh, I am, I am more supportive of, on the backflow, two things, educating people of the purpose of it, um, a little better. And then I'd be inclined to go towards the, the shut-off, uh, the water shut-off as a enforcement mechanism rather than chasing around fines and dollars, because it is a service and it is tied to safety. That is the easiest way in my mind to get that compliance, if that's indeed what we're trying to do. The other part, you mentioned, uh, medical, uh, in the sewage and the updating the ordinances. And, uh, just as a, as a kind of a, a light note, that made me remember of the teenage mutant ninja turtles. But other than that, I agree with everybody else.
Okay, so, you know, just a quick summation here, trying to keep track. It looks like, uh, the majority of the commission, you know, believes in managing the enterprise funds to get a hundred percent cost recovery. And you need to work with your customers to see if the best way to do that is incremental, you know, so that we don't, uh, cause a, a shock effect. And so that would apply to all the different things there. I think we're for the flexibility, so the city manager has the ability, two, three weeks, whatever it takes, uh, for notifications. And, and I think we have to ramp up the compliance, but, but again, focus more on safety than punishment, because going to municipal court, that just means a hundred dollar court fee on top of whatever the fine is. So a better solution may be to shut off water, as a number of the commissioners said, and try to, uh, you know, maybe send them a bill and if they don't pay it, shut off the water. If there's some logistics on, uh, you know, adding it to the water bill. So I think generally you've got probably, uh, you know, pretty good agreement on everything you presented. So excellent briefing. Is there anything else we need to cover?
Well, I, I would note on, on the potential water shut-off, you know, we do that with regular utility billing. And they're always given a notice that if they don't pay their bill within a certain time period, then the shut-off will occur.
Yeah, it wouldn't be something that happens in the overnight, I understand. There'd be plenty of warning.
Your water's getting turned off.
Yeah, be plenty of warnings.
So, so it, it's, uh, you know, a carrot and stick, uh, dangle it in front of them. And, you know, if you don't comply, you're going to get the stick. We don't want to shut off the water because of this either. Uh, we would rather they just take care of it the first time, so.
No, I think we agree. We don't want to be too draconian, but we want to ensure the safety and make things work. So excellent briefing and excellent work on everybody in the water department. You've got your hands full. You didn't show us pictures this time of how all the grease would gum up your lift stations. I remember that from years ago.
Yeah.
So that grease thing is very important. So if there's nothing else, I think we're done for this evening. We're adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.